I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry for my tardiness. Work gets in the way of all these things. Sorry.
I literally just said you were writing a couple minutes later before we said that. Welcome, everyone.
Route seventeen is not fine. Right, Route seventeen.
I just wanted to do audience to, you get, I'm sorry, I'll say it this way. Please remember to keep all your comments to audience participation. When speaking during audience participation, we just ask you to come up, stand at the podium, state your name and town of residency. We don't need your address. Town of residency is fine. Any guest speakers, there's a five-minute limit, except for Delaware if you're on the agenda, but in any comments that the audience has, please direct it directly to the board, not to each other. So that being said, can I get a motion to start the meeting at seven oh one?
I'll make the motion to start the meeting.
Thank you. Meeting the works, right?
Meeting the works.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting, February first in the last board meeting?
I made a motion to approve the minutes from the last board meeting. Second of all, thank you.
I'm gonna abstain because I didn't get the read and it just came in tonight, so that's no problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Correspondence, Christine.
All right, that's a pretty short list. The board members have a Steve's draft copy of the February first meeting minutes, a copy of proposed local law one of two thousand twenty-four, and that's the law regarding the weight limits on village roads, a copy of board resolution regarding the proposed LoSAP referendum. We have received notifications from the Department of Civil Service that as of January two thousand twenty-five, the Excelsior Plan, which is the health insurance plan that we use, will be retired, which means that the village will either have to move to the Empire Plan, or they'll have to withdraw from that altogether.
And that's on what day?
Next January.
Okay.
But we do have to let them know our intent by July, so we have a few months to do some research and figure out what we're gonna do. The water report for January two thousand twenty-four has been received from D P W Water Superintendent Frank Valentino, and we've received the insurance information from the Little League for their coming season. That's all I have.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Moving on over to D P W.
All right. Water report for January two thousand twenty-four, the village's daily usage was thirty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine. The state prison's daily usage was a hundred and twenty-five thousand eight thirteen. I worked on the D P W article for the newsletter, emailed it to Heidi today. I have two quotes for the utility vehicle. One was from John Deere for a gator for twenty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-two and eighty-eight cents, and that's a cab with a heater. The other one we got, we received was from Kubota for twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen eighty-two. That's got a cab with a heater and A C, the difference of a thousand eighty-five ninety-four, and it's got a two-year extended warranty.
All right, so I have a question for you. Since the last meeting, we were all celebrating all the stuff that you sold. What has been picked up and what hasn't been picked up?
The garbage truck's been picked up, the John Deere's been picked up, the backhoe's been picked up, and we're just waiting under the code.
Okay.
They paid for that now?
It was supposed to pay for it today.
Okay. Thanks, Frank. Now, what you got?
Well, on that note, I've been, the guy came to Black Friday, picked up the garbage truck, drove it back to Maine. I talked to him on Sunday, got back there, no problem. He says he's very happy with the truck. With that being picked up and the tractor and stuff, we've been cleaning up the little house yard. Looks a lot better down there. Working on the mowers, getting ready for spring. Get the guys, we got the new tables are coming for park on Tuesday, so we'll put them together and get them down there. We're setting the cones up tomorrow for the Chinese New Year along Baker Street. Also, if the resolution goes through for park equipment, I'll be ordering that tomorrow morning, so we'll have it per thing deal.
Okay. You're already on D M V?
Gotta be it.
I was supposed to go on Mark.
No, we get that file stolen before the gator.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Frank.
Yep.
Okay, moving along. Town of Mount Hope. Kurt, do you have anything that you want to say?
Oh, no.
I didn't mean to put you in a spot, but I'm sorry.
No.
All right. I do have a report from the Town of Mount Hope. Unfortunately, Karen couldn't make it tonight because she had another meeting, so I'm just gonna buzz through this. Summer camp registration's now happening. You can register online or Town Hall line four. There's also multiple flyers that are out. I believe I actually shared it on our page today for them. Summer concert series bands, all of them are booked for eight weeks. I'm not going to go into too much detail until our next board meeting because nothing is out officially yet, so. They are putting an R F P out for food and drink truck, as in an alcohol truck, if you heard me correctly, vendors for the concert series. The town has decided for their summer concert series that they want to have a food truck to try to start that. They're also gonna have, they put an R F P out for an alcohol truck to come, obviously controlled up at the town park for those concerts. Fitness Center's gonna be closed Saturday and Sunday, as in the seventeenth and eighteenth, and the reason for that is the Chinese New Year that's happening up there is in both buildings, and it's gonna be, from what I saw, and I handed you guys this, it's, it looks like it's gonna be all of the proper, oh, it's gonna be big, yes. The next town board meeting will not be Monday. There's actually town training, so I think four out of the five board members are going to that down in the city, so the next board meeting there will be one twenty-seven. There will be a public hearing on two local laws. One is the advisory committees, and two, and I believe that's for Hidden Valley, and two is for local law number two, ethics.
The next board meeting is two twenty-six.
I'm sorry, two twenty-six. No.
No.
One twenty-seven.
One, no.
I'm sorry, you mean two twenty. Sorry. She wrote one twenty-six, I'm sorry.
It's gonna be on Tuesday?
Uh, let's see, it's gonna be on.
Two twenty, you're right.
No, that's the day they can't make it. Normally, it would be on Tuesday because Monday's a holiday. They bumped it to the following week.
It's the twenty-sixth, you're right. Yes, Monday the twenty-sixth, sorry. That was misspelling. Yell at her when I get home.
Okay.
Quick question. With the concert series, I know we're assisting with that, who?
Hold on a second, we didn't vote on that yet. I hope we're ever assisting, but go ahead.
I apologize, though.
Yep.
Who is the contact for anybody, like, for all this stuff?
For this year, no one, because it's booked. We got four new bands.
About the food vendors, though.
They're gonna put an R F P out at their next meeting, so my advice would be to either go to their next meeting on the twenty-sixth, or watch it online and you can see the contact. They're gonna put it out. They have to pass that first. I'm sure they're looking for any food trucks. I think I'm pretty neat. Other municipalities seem to be pretty successful with this food truck deal, so I look forward to it coming here. Not that I don't like Little League's food. I do, but I'm just saying. That's rascally. I know, I know where you're going. Fire chief's report, Rob.
Evening, everybody. First off, I'd like to thank Brian Latimer and Brian Carey for getting the bathrooms done and all your help with the front of the firehouse repairs. Appreciate it.
Looks good.
Myself and a few volunteers at the firehouse, been busy the last week, week and a half. We've been painting the truck house. As you knew, we started the bailout, the window and all that stuff, we completed it, painted it, and kinda just kept going with it, so it's going pretty good.
That's awesome.
Thank you. One four four, yesterday, we had a M B A car accident while en route. The steering piston failed, snapped, but I don't know if it was rotted or just broke off. They were able to turn around here. We, car two got on scene and we weren't needed anyway, so we're returning them to quarters. Got back, the driver was able to get safely back to firehouse. That's gonna have to go out for repairs, it's out of service. Howl's on automatic response for us for all M B As. Our battery tools are on the other trucks with cribbing and stuff like that, so we're still able to respond. They'll be coming behind us. Physicals were completed. We had twenty-three people. There's two or three other ones that have to catch up on. We'll be doing fit tests shortly. Sorry I haven't been at the last three or whatever, I was working and stuff. Do you still, the suction unit last, at the last meeting, you had questions on that?
They talked to me about it, so we're good.
Okay, all right, copy of that. Training, we have two firefighters currently enrolled in the E M T class down at the training center. We have one firefighter that's in the V I F O, it's online, and then she'll be doing all the hands-on stuff at the training center also. We have, hopefully, if there's ice next, this weekend, we have one firefighter that was able to get back into the ice rescue class, so she'll be attending that if there's ice. Four of our current E M Ts are going for these national certified classes, pre-hospital life support, geriatric E M S, advanced medical life support, and E M S safety course to continue their training. And then the last thing, been making repairs to my chief's car, so we've been getting quotes on a new chief's truck, like, use the reserve money or whatever we have to quotes and stuff. I don't know, just bring that up to you guys and give you the quotes or have that.
That's fine. How many quotes did you get, Rob?
I'm working on a second one. I have the one, I have the one from the, what the state did. And that's, that's all I have online. Any questions or?
Thank you for, everyone, including Tony, to go up and open the doors, for Dutch's overhead doors. I know it's your firehouse, but I know it's kind of, all the repairs are knock on wood, except for the sheet rocker done, so we're back to, yeah. Fini, Fini did a nice job over there and, yeah.
Really can't even tell, the brickwork.
I was actually shocked.
Yeah.
Just for people's general information, can you explain a little bit about the bailout window? Because I think that's what I'll let you guys review that.
Yeah, so the bailout window is, we have bailout harnesses where the firefighters, obviously, we're going in the rest of you guys. If conditions change or we have to, if things get crazy, we'll bail out the window. So in the past, we used to use our window in the firehouse. Now we built one, we have a deck over in our bay. We built years ago, so we ended up framing out a window underneath the beams, we have full protection. You'll use your, it's for firefighters that are training to learn how to use the bailout system. So it's in-house, we can train and practice, and then as they go to firefighter survival classes or any of that stuff. And it's a yearly qualification you have to do moving forward, so instead of going down to the training center, now we have it in our firehouse. So it's a good, yeah, good piece of equipment. Get your confidence up. You know, you go down to training center, you do it two or three times, you're nervous, it's kinda scary, how many times you jump out a window, you know? So having it up here in our drills, when we do, you know, maze or any practice stuff, if you wanna do, we could just do it as you want, so.
Thanks to all the guys for painting it. I realize you have a pride in your building, so thank you. Thank you all that.
Definitely. So doing our best. That's all we can do, right?
Moving forward. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Guest speakers, we have Delaware Engineering here tonight. How are you guys? You?
Good.
Anywhere you want. You don't want to sit right there as far?
Mike Aiello, Helen Budarock.
Can we have you over there? And the other reason why we record our meetings in here, yeah. And everyone's gonna be like, wow, that guy's back in the heads.
Mike Aiello and Helen Budarock with Delaware Engineering. Been around about thirty years. We have an office up in Oniana with our recent years, well, recent decade, we say, headquarters will probably be in Albany. We still have our original office in Oniana. About five years ago, I'm a local native, I worked with Delaware, the satellite office in Goshen, and Helen, her office in Monticello. So we're small satellite offices nearby. About, I don't know, probably a year ago, nine months ago.
I haven't been here that long.
Okay.
Nine months ago, yes, yes.
We were introduced and talked about your, let me just back up. Our, the focus for Delaware Engineering is really water wastewater, municipal, primarily municipal, but also in certain extent, private systems and industrial wastewater wastewater treatment, and the system of the whole that are coincidentally to pumping systems, water storage tanks, collection systems for sewer, distribution systems for water. That's probably five percent of our business. We try to stay on our lane and do things efficiently. Again, six, nine months ago, we were introduced, discussed what some of your needs might be, and most pressing seems to be the need to replace your single sole water storage tank that's about forty, forty years old, is that right, Frank?
Yeah, nineteen seventy.
It's in need of, need of maintenance, repairs, which is not uncommon for a tank that age. I usually do certain maintenance because they don't have ten, even ten, twenty years after a tank was built. That being said, the only way to do things, do it correctly is to take the tank out of service. What do you do when that happens? You've already started looking into it, the solution, right solution probably is to build a sister tank, same size, right next to it, that replaces your existing tank, but gives you the means to actually now have two tanks, not be under the gun to, to get repairs done in haste and put your one tank back in service. The village doesn't have a big base, rate payer base, tax base, to the prison, which is in your favor, but that being said, you're still a small, a small system, so any, anything you have to fund is a burden to the rate payers. So you ask, what might, what opportunities might be out there to help, to help assist you? And so much of our work involves finding funding for municipalities through, mostly through what your state offers, and we provide you a proposal to submit application to, let's say, get on the state's list. Before I start getting into the weeds on this, that's why Helen's here, because she's really our grant and funding guru, can explain the stuff much more fluidly than I can. I'm kind of the technical person, so I'm gonna just go up to Helen, and she can just discuss what the opportunity, state opportunities are, state revolving fund, we grants, that type of thing, what the deadlines are, what the requirements are, timeframe is to get listed, and that hopefully puts the proposal in perspective. And after that, I can answer, either of us can answer any question to my end. So you wanna just give a quick rundown on what the state did, state money?
Sure. I'll give a quick overview. The proposal that you have in front of you is actually primarily to prepare an engineering report, so the actual cost of submitting the applications is very minimal, it's a small part of that.
Can you hold on one second?
Of course.
The proposal you don't have in front of you.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Now, hold on. Came out last meeting, and I said, please read over this, and if you have any questions, that's why they're here tonight. So they don't have it in front of them, but they all got, it was a really, really, really thick packet, probably twenty-something pages.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. No, 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 that's all right, that's all right. Everyone's looking like, where is the packet?
There you go. So I'll back up a minute. Right now, there is more funding for infrastructure than there ever has been in recent past. So in two thousand twenty-one, you may be familiar, Congress passed a bipartisan infrastructure law. That federal funding got passed down to the states, and then in two thousand twenty-two, New York State passed an environmental bond act, the voters did. That provided some additional state funds for infrastructure and other things as well. But right now, there is an unprecedented amount of funding out there for municipal infrastructure projects. So really, there are standalone grant programs that you can do by themselves, but really, the way to unlock the bill funding, the federal funding, which is the big money, is through the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. They have a revolving loan fund where they loan out money to municipalities to conduct infrastructure repairs and upgrades, but they also administer the bill grants. So the only way that you can unlock the potential to get a bill, federal grant for infrastructure, is by going through the state revolving loan fund process. So the first step in doing that is to prepare an engineering report that basically outlines what your system is, what your needs are, you know, potential alternatives, cost estimates, you know, schedule, et cetera. So that's what the proposal that we gave you was for, primarily for Mike to do the hard work, which is to do the engineering report, and then I take that and I submit it to the state, because they publish every year something called an intended use plan. It's basically a document that says, okay, these are all the projects that have been submitted to us that say they potentially will be asking for money for us in the next federal fiscal year. So those listing forms and those engineering reports, the deadline to get on their list for this current fiscal year is in June. So that's why we're here, you know, with you today, is because it takes a couple of months to get the engineering report prepared, the application to be prepared, submitted, and then usually around the end of July, E F C publishes a draft version of the intended use plan, and based on the information that's in the application, as well as things like your median family income, and whether or not you have potential environmental justice areas like the prison, that document will tell you, based on the information that we provide, whether or not you qualify for bill federal grants, which could be up to seventy percent of the total cost of the project, so you'd only end up having thirty percent out of the village's pocket if you qualified. And then the other thing is, they will tell you whether or not you qualify for what's called hardship financing, which is zero percent financing. So best case scenario, let's just say you had a million dollar project, you could theoretically, if you qualify, get seven hundred thousand dollars in grants, and then three hundred thousand as a zero interest loan that you can pay over, you know, thirty years, so that the impact to the rate payers is a lot less than if you, you know, sort of nickel to dime things, you know, using just, you know, village funds that you might have available for, you know, for capital improvements. So that is sort of an overview of the funding that's out there, and why we're here today. From a timing perspective, is to see if you're interested in moving forward with a preliminary engineering report, look at the water system, evaluate the alternatives, and then submit the information to E F C for the upcoming funding round, and then you can see where you stand.
I just wanna add this part. Mike, I know Mike has been in here working with Frank and John, getting information, so this is not his second or third time walking in the building. I know he has also worked with Christine on stuff to collect data. So how I kind of got introduced, just to go back here a little bit, I'm up the board on this, but Jesse Dwyer was the mayor over in Greenwood Lake, and he worked with you guys. He's now, obviously, the supervisor over in Orwood, for those people that don't know that. There was a newspaper article kind of written when I had run for this office, and Jesse kind of called me up out of the blue. I met Jesse once in my life, he called me up out of the blue, he came up here and introduced me to you guys, and we've gone since then. So you've been working on this for a while, obviously, collecting information, putting this all together. Clearly, water is something, I guess, we should all be thinking about. As old as our system is, we haven't done much to it, and I think that's a fair statement to say, other than water mains, but I realize that the water tank and some other issues with it is kind of why they're here tonight. I realize that this is a commitment to get an engineer's report, which is really the step first step, and then after we get the engineer's report, after all that's done, that's where we're gonna see where we're at. So really, this is kind of step one going forward. Am I fair to say about that?
Yeah. The engineer's report is officially referred to as a preliminary engineer's report, everybody calls it P E R. It's not, and that really is your sales pitch to the state to say, make a case for, for funding. And I had your folder in my briefcase for two days, and this afternoon, I meant to, there's something else I also wanted to include with it, took it out, of course, I forgot to put it back in my briefcase, but it was gonna be an example of what the, a typical, a similar P E R is, another product we've worked on. So you get an idea how thick it is, so that you understand why, what goes into our proposal, the cost for the, for the report. There's a, there's a particular format that has to be followed, otherwise they pretty much, we'll toss it out right there. So that's why it's so thick and time consuming to prepare. And I can, I can, I'll email you an example as, so the board can see exactly what goes into the reports. Something else that we discussed and I'll give to the board is, if you are fortunately selected for funding, you can request reimbursement for the preparation of the P E R. However, in order to do so, you first will have to solicit request, you'll have to request professional qualifications, publicly request it. It's not, it's a, it's a form of procurement, but not based on price, it's based on qualifications. So if, if the board thinks that's something they're gonna wanna do in the end, I understand you're opening up to any, any firm out there that might wanna offer their services to you, not just Delaware, but that we, if that's an avenue you think you wanna go down, we suggest doing that right away, maybe as far, publicly notice the request for qualifications in the paper of record, wherever that is, and you told me which one it was, and then try to maybe buy, have it in by, by next month, in order, in order to meet the deadline, the June deadline, regardless of whatever you decide to select. So I just wanted to let you know, aware of what that option is, and kind of how quickly you have to get moving on that to make the issue's list.
If we were to do that, to solicit proposals, does that guarantee that if we got a grant, that the engineering costs will be included in the reimbursement, or it just opens up the window of opportunities?
Yeah, it opens up the window of opportunity. I mean, E F C will, you know, decide, you know, based on the information that's submitted, whether or not that's reimbursable, but in all cases, to be honest with you, the procurement requirement is only about a year old, year, year and a half. It's fairly new with the federal funding that came through. So, but in our experience, as long as you go through that procurement process, and there's a certification form that you have to check off and send to them, that we haven't had an issue with reimbursing those engineering costs. So, you know, that's entirely up to you if you wanna take that extra step. It's just additional time, but it gives you that flexibility.
And ultimately, whatever price you guys gave us, ultimately, we can put in for money to be reimbursed for the money that would be paid out. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone?
Either which way.
Right. I mean, listen.
We can assist you with, this is pretty standard public notice, but we can assist you with the wording.
Phil is arguably the number one thing we have to.
The number one thing.
Number one thing in our field, so I think that would.
Bob, do you have any questions?
No questions, but I'm interested in, you know, possibly, you know, proceeding. That's, you know.
I'm gonna ask everyone. I mean, listen, okay, so.
I mean, I think, you know, right, I mean, you guys have already been kind of working on it, but.
Not kind of, no, they've been working on it. There's no, yeah.
We're okay at this point when we first met, but the deadline for last year, it wasn't gonna work out. Everything would've been done in haste, and it wouldn't have been.
I think I met you guys like the beginning of May or sometime in May, and I think maybe the end of April, beginning of May, and I just think it was, and you had a lot of data to collect from us to see where we were at, so we missed last year's.
Yeah, again, if you missed that June fourteenth deadline, then you basically lose it on holiday, so that's probably where you were at that point last year.
Just being with Frank and John, it's not, the, the tank is the big project, you know, the quarters whole thing, but there's some other things that you'd like to, they'd like done as well, and this should all be bundled in to make, you want, you wanna make as much case as possible for everything that has to be done, and hopefully you get the biggest reward possible, and all this stuff can be done. The other items in particular are updating and moving your controls in your, in your well, well-controlled building, which is, it's, everything's great, it's just old, it's kinda getting antiquated. It's exposed to corrosion.
That's the problem, we all know that.
And you have a lot of water main replacements. I think your water, the quality of your water's good, it's just you have some old mains and all the time, that's, that's what causes the dirty water. So we throw, in addition to the tank itself, we would be updating, relocation of the controls, and identify as much mains that are still need replacements possible, throw the, throw all that in there. And then in the report, which you'll see is a section that has to do with the effect on rates and all that type of thing.
Lance, you have any questions?
No, we talked about it before. Question is, how soon would begin the time at finishing? Not, not the work, I mean, as far as us, same, go ahead with the engineer. How long?
Well, we, well, it's, because it's, it's, it takes some effort, and there's a hard deadline of, it's middle of June, but our targets would be like maybe June first or May thirty-first, and actually even before then, because we wanna provide you with a draft before, make sure you're okay with it, you don't want anything else included, you want things taken out.
Wednesday, Thursday, next week?
Tuesday, sixteen.
Two months.
Definitely, two months, so, I mean, if, if, if you want us to proceed with it.
I don't have to write it, he has to.
I realize.
We wanna know probably by the middle of, you know, I'd say the latest end of March, middle of March, if you were to solicit qualifications.
So we'd wanna do that immediately.
I would recommend do that immediately, like, if you can make a motion, put in next week's paper, and get, give like two weeks for responses. Quicker the better, so maybe you can decide at your next meeting. Do you meet, Helen, I remember, you meet twice a month.
So definitely, if you decided to do a proposal, obviously, it wouldn't be for the next meeting, but if you could get it in the little papers early next week, then possibly at your, you know, meeting.
Now, let me, I just have a question for you about that. So the proposal for the next meeting would be to put it out there for another engineer company to come forward and explain that to. So the proposal for the next meeting would be to put it out there for another engineer company to come forward and explain that to me a little bit.
It's a request for qualifications, which you're requesting qualifications of professional services company engineering on their, their interest and ability and experience with, with doing such projects, and we'll spell everything out.
And you could provide us with a sample?
We can provide, yeah.
And that's an EFC requirement. So if you plan again to seek reimbursement for any of those engineering fees, once you get to the point where you're ready to finance a project, then you have to demonstrate that you went through a qualifications-based proposal. So again, it's not based on cost, it's based on experience with similar projects.
It's really, not something, a proposal kind of implies that there's a cost associated with it, like you're asking for a quote. It's not the quote, you're asking for a firm's, that's your resume, basically, their qualifications. And then so you can do your, it's professional services, so you don't have to follow the procurement. They just have to compare it against, say, you know, this firm, you know, somebody's interested, but they don't have a lot of experience.
Right.
And you can.
Okay. All right. Diane, do you have any questions?
Well, I think you've answered it, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. So you're, in putting this proposal together, you would be going soup to nuts. Everything that could possibly be that we could see as a need in our water system would be included in that?
We will put that, we will put that in the preliminary engineer's report to get listed.
So all the water main replacements that need to be done, and all the, the upgrades to the plant?
The tanks. And you already have, you already have two key quotations from suppliers. The water tank, a tank your size is basically going to be a glass, it's called a, a glass fuse to steel bolted tank, which is, it's a proprietary product by Agastor. It's basically ninety percent of the tanks you'll see in Orange County, unless you, until you get down by the big cities and whatnot, they've got big concrete tanks, glass, glass fuse to steel tank is what systems of this size pretty much everybody uses because they, they last for generations. I mean, you still have to do inspections every so often, but.
That was what we were looking for.
They're almost maintenance, we're looking for two.
One.
They're looking for one, but by building that one, you're not, now you can take the other one out of service and actually do repairs on that. And we can believe and include the repairs on the other tank. That's what I was looking for, trying to repair the other one. And I've got some, some degree of redundancy, even though the new tank is going to be light years ahead of your other one.
Would you be able to put in there if it's even cost effective to repair that one as opposed to getting a new, just like the other one?
I, well, we'll throw it in there.
Because it is so old, is it even worth?
You're not going to know, you drain.
Yeah, 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 you have to drain it. Yeah, you have to drain like that, I mean, you never want to get, we're in a tank, even if it's not typically used, because God forbid, you just never know if a plane is going to fly into your other tankers, you know, something's going to, something's going to hit it. You just, you just never know. So if you, if you have a tank that otherwise has integrity to it, and just needs some maintenance, and that's a relative term.
So it's spare.
It is just spare, and, and even the routine operations, it would be in service as well.
Mike didn't like my idea, wanted to get a big tank that was on pilots that Otisville on it.
Well, when you order these tanks, they'll ask you what you.
All right, we'll remember that. All right, so.
I know that, I'm sure the mayor talked to you about, as you alluded to it, the relationship that we have with state prison. And have you seen the contract that we have with them? You have, somebody told me.
And that, we're going to use every avenue possible to. Yes, that could be a phase, we're hoping that plays in your favor.
Yes.
I was looking at that today, even if you don't meet the income threshold, there's a little kind of caveat there that says if more than fifty percent of the total project costs go to assist a potential environmental justice area, which the area around prison is, then you could qualify. So there's a bunch of different ways that you can qualify for grants and financing. And to Mike's point, you kind of bundle all of your needs together, and then once you find out what your goals were for, then you can decide, okay, are we all in? Or are we going to, you know, pare it back and just do the stuff that's critical? Because, you know, we didn't get as much attractive, you know, package as we hoped for, or, or not.
Now, from your reading of the contract, and I know this is more an attorney's thing than yours, but let's say potentially we apply, eventually we've got these federal grants and we're paying thirty percent loan over a period of time. That would be a cost that would be covered under the contract, correct? So that the prison would have to be paying their share towards those costs, those expenses?
I don't know how the contract is structured.
Have you seen the contract? I don't know it.
But usually there's a combination of capital and O and M expense, and, you know, you're charged accordingly. So that additional capital expense would be allocated amongst all the ratepayers. And if the prison is your predominant ratepayer, they would pay their share of that capital expense.
Yeah, they pay a percentage of the entire operating cost.
Okay.
So, okay.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Necessary.
So I guess, can I get a motion to move forward on this, so we're not behind?
I'll make a motion right now to move forward.
Do you want to know what the motion's going to be for?
No, I think we need it.
Okay, fair enough.
We need water.
We need water.
Listen, water should be number one priority. I would hope on all five of our priorities. I mean, listen, I know people come in, complain over the year, listen, I get it. So if we can make it better, that's the goal on my behalf. So, all right, so I guess the next step is going to be to put this out in the Times-South Record, by the way, that was. You're going to. Go ahead.
No, no, he was just suggesting tomorrow, if you want to put it out for a qualifications-based proposal, we can email, you know, the village clerk, some sample language, and get it out as soon as possible.
We'll roll it out and get it out, and have an update for next meeting, fair enough. All right, I thank both of you for coming.
Is there a certain number of days that have to be given for that, assume? Is it like any other request for a proposal?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I know they suggest that you give at least three to four weeks in between the date that it appears in the paper and when proposals are, are due back. So you'll have.
So that's why you said by our next meeting, we would, we'd be two meetings in.
Yeah, exactly. So, but again, we'll, we'll send you the templates, and there's, you know, instructions in there, and then we'll just take it on second sign.
Perfect. If we got any questions, we'll call you tomorrow.
Do the board my, my contact?
Absolutely.
I have one last question, and it may be premature, and I apologize that I don't have the proposal in front of me. But did your, the proposal that you gave us, did that give a ballpark figure as to what the initial engineering cost would be?
No, it was just to prepare the preliminary engineer's report to get you listed for.
Right.
I think that's what she was asking.
That makes, that's thirty.
Thirty-five. It was thirty-five, yeah, that was for the report and some administrative work.
Thirty thousand for the report, and then five thousand for sort of the submission of the applications.
In my head, I was remembering a thirty, but since it's not here.
It's a not too steep figure, but it's, it's pretty close, you know, it's pretty close to that. And, you know, we understand you're a small community, we're not here to, we'll work with the, if you, if you, if you decide, if you go, decide to go with us, we're, you know, we will work with you as your income's available. Because it will take some time to, again, hopefully if you are chosen for, if that's the right word, chosen for funding, it'll take some time before that fund becomes available. And that's something you just keep in mind, when you're applying for funding, other people's money, my best, one of the parts says the best way, when you're using other people's money, you got to pay by their rules.
Right.
Things get dragged out, and sort of because that, some things, the cost of certain things bump up, you know, there's certain things or instructions you're going to have to comply with. But in the end, I think this is, the size of this project will make it work for a while.
Well, thank you for coming, both of you.
Anytime.
Thank you for informing us, and where I left it off was, we have a motion, and I got a second on that motion.
No, there's no word.
The motion was to move forward, to get the information from Delaware Engineering, to put this in the paper, to get other people to possibly put a.
Put a motion to advertise for qualifications being proposed in the Times-South Record.
That was the first. Second, thank you, sir, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Look forward to, no, I look forward to seeing the end of paper, and I look forward to working through this. I'm, listen, I'll be, I'm sure we'll all be happy. All right, that being said, trustees' reports. Diane, we'll start with you tonight. Thank you again, guys.
Thank you very much, very useful.
Drive safe.
Okay, Christine's been in touch with O and R, asking for advice on how we go about moving contacts to request that additional street light at the corner of Baker Street. Just this late this afternoon, he did get back to us, so I'll be working on that this week. Apparently, we don't write through the portal, so that will be good. CBA, I'm going to request that the message that was put out on Facebook a couple of weeks ago be put out again, that we are looking for alternate members, and there will be an article in the newsletter about it, and I'll throw the planning board alternate in with the article. Community Advisory Board for the state and federal prisons, everybody should have gotten the minutes from the last board meeting. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. EFCI is holding another recruitment event next Wednesday, February twenty-first. They have been quite successful in getting people in and applying, I don't know if they hired anybody yet, but, so I think you'll probably see them doing these recruitment fairs once a month. So if you know anyone who is the least bit interested, they should at least go to the fair and see what's going on. This afternoon, I got an email from the superintendent at the state facility listing several vacancy announcements that are right here in Otisville, and asking if we could help get the word out. So first way I'm going to do it is just to mention what those, they are looking for a motor vehicle operator, and that's in the maintenance department. They're looking for a locksmith. Water treatment plant operator two, has to do a licensing, I guess. Stuff together. A vocational instructor for barbering. I like this. Of your duties and responsibilities, it has listed, will be discussed at the interview. I guess they figure if you're applying to be an instructor for a barber, you kind of know what you're going to have to do. Registered nurse, and that's a per diem position. And an offender rehab coordinator ASAP, which I don't know what that stands for, but it's one of the CASE Act certifications. So they do have a lot of opportunities besides correctional officers, they're always looking for correct officers. Christine will be hanging these in the vestibule here, and we're going to see if Kate can do some magic and get them all into one announcement, so we can put them on Facebook as well. All righty, newsletter, I have several articles going to Heidi for the March issue. I just want to give them one last edit before I send them to her, since I don't expect her to have to do that. And lastly, I want to thank all those who came out to support the Mount Hope seniors and their scholarship fundraiser on the third. It was tremendously successful, and we really appreciate it from everyone. I guess, Frank, I had a couple of questions for you, and I might as well ask you now. The roof at the pavilion, the night of the Christmas tree lighting, it was leaking, right?
Yes.
Has that been looked at or addressed at all?
No.
Probably spring.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Probably frozen solid right now with snow.
But maybe we should have like.
Armor to your list for spring. Let the smell of it is, if it's.
Once the snow is off it, I mean, I don't know nothing about roofs, but can we like put a tarp on it or something if it's really, because?
How bad is it?
I don't think it's that bad. Mike, he's a roof, that's been up, shouldn't have been on there for what, twenty years, I think?
Yeah. And speaking of shingles, have you looked at the shingles on the shelter? Because there's an awful lot missing.
Well, that, we have, well, we're at the lift here coming spring to clean the water tank.
Yeah.
Do that, and we'll be able to, we're going to have.
Yeah, I don't know about this side, I can only see from my side, but yeah, it doesn't look good, so.
We also have a leak down at the water plant, too.
Thirty years old, too, though.
Don't say that. Take that back.
Isn't that a commercial, everything great? And the only other thing is, has to do with recycling, yeah, with the fact that, you know, we've been really on our residents about making sure they sort their recycling so that it doesn't get rejected. Something I noticed on my street, two different residents, not I can I. And then I had someone else bring it to my attention, wasn't Rob either, bring it to my attention. On recycling day, if you ride around the village, there's lots of people who, along with their recycling can, have plastic bags of something out. Whether it's recycling in those plastic bags, or whether it's garbage in the plastic bags, I don't know what's in the plastic bags, but the guys are picking it up. No wonder our stuff is getting rejected. If it's in plastic bags, tell them they've got to leave it there.
I got a great idea. Why don't we find one of your guys that wants to be a movie star and take a video of what it's supposed to look like and what it's not supposed to look like? We'll post it online, and we'll let people watch what they're supposed to do. I think to educate people and not put plastic bags and stuff is going to be very hard to do. We seem to every newsletter put something out, something out, something out, so maybe we'll make a video. So talk to your guys, see who wants to be a movie star for the day. All right, and you know what, we'll take a nice video of them, whatever, and we'll, we'll put it up there, and that's fine. And if someone else is a little jealous of that, then we'll get the next guy to do it, and then we'll continue to post videos.
But you're missing the point. If, if we're taking it, they're not going to, they don't care what we tell them they have to do. You have to leave it there.
I understand your point. I think we've talked about this with plastic bags. Our own cleaning woman in here was taking plastic bags and throwing our recyclers in the garbage, so I fully understand what you're saying. I just think it's education, 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 that's all. We'll take a video.
Yeah, we have those tags.
If it's out there for recycling, how bad, don't take it, stays there.
And the other thing.
Well, I think you tell someone while you're taking it, you just don't leave it, because then we're going to get a phone call here and say.
We have a tag that they put on it.
That's fine. Let's, let's just, if it's the same person over and over, let's just, a little education.
Well, and the other thing, I think we have a lot of new people coming in, and we've talked about this over and over again, that maybe we have to come up with a system for letting people know. You know, when, when anybody goes into my house on Stevall Avenue, there's a packet of things I give them, and one of them is the garbage lot. You know, and maybe we need to figure out a way that we can at least try to have that available when we know, you know, there's been a closing on a house or something else.
Contact Facebook.
How about Wordbills?
Wordbills.
That's obviously, okay.
All right, and that's all I have.
Constant contact, I like. Okay. Lance, what do you got?
I don't have much. One thing is the slay of Gotti Hills, I couldn't go out and enjoy it.
It was busy the other day.
Yes, it was, it was, no problem. Thank you guys for maintaining it. I really will have support our Chinese New Year this weekend. Hopefully have no problem with parking, and thank you guys for being on the ball. Little League is starting up, so we'll be getting ready for our fields there, be ready for them. But I'm going to pick the tables, we're moving down. That's all I have.
Perfect. No, that's fine. All good. Brian, what do you got?
I don't have much either, obviously, it's crazy with work. John or Frank, that was tough Tuesday, huh, with all that snow? Thank you, that was crazy, let the town know, too.
Rob, thank you for all the calls. Yeah, came in quick, it was crazy.
I was driving around, the village drills looked a lot better than the.
I was just about to say that my commute down.
Talk about the county.
It was, you didn't see the overtime report. I don't care, you guys have the roads clear, it was great, it was good. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
I spoke with Chris Ketchum with Ketchum Fence, because we had that proposal previous with the fencing down at the Burger Field. He let me know that the proposal was still good till the end of this month. After that, I guess it's like a thing with our area, it's like a ten percent increase for everyone, for product material, hello inflation. So, but he will, if we move forward with it, they'll be glad to keep it there, but they would need to know by the end of this month. For the, for the A Field fence, that'll be the last field, all the other ones are done, one field to go. So, that's up for you guys. Like Lance said, the Little League is ramping up again. March tenth is the pancake breakfast up at the Fireball. Rob, great job up there, I did go up there, it does look good, you took a lot of my thunder, a lot of your report, so that's part of it. a lot of your reports, so, that's probably what I have a lot to report on.
Right now.
So, but besides those couple of things, that's really all I have to report on right now.
Okay, let's, I hate to say it this way, but let's circle back to your Little League thing, we'll come back to that.
Okay.
Bob, what you got?
I don't have anything to report tonight, Mr. Mayor, other than I told you before that I'm gonna come in tomorrow morning and do the mail logs, I've been laid up this week and didn't get to it. I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay, moving along. I'm gonna buzz through mine quick, so we can get the audience participation here.
Good job.
Thank you. Lance Deckerhill, as I, it was called, and I kinda put a posting up for that, some people asked what that was. That's long before I got to the Village of Otisville, but I think it was great to see kids out there. Couple people wrote, posted some pictures, but one complaint was due to the snow on Tuesday, I guess it was a little, you couldn't take a tube and go down it. So, they had to borrow some on sled, and that was up there, and I guess it was good, but the next day when everything froze, it was great, so I'm happy to see kids in the park, cause it was a good thing to see. And the bathrooms are open, and we're all good there, so, beautiful. Not really gonna talk about that. Defensive driving class, coming up Saturday, March twenty third, I know we have a little while, as of right now, we have twenty people, so it will happen, this is the third in less than a year that we've had, due to people asking about it. Forty people can fit in this class, it's forty dollars per person, and if you wanna sign up, you can call here during the day, or you can email me, and I'll make sure you get on the list. I've been working on estimates for this boardroom to update it, and get rid of this nineteen-seventies paneling. I actually had four people come in to take a look at it. I will probably, hopefully, well, not probably, I will definitely have estimates for the next meeting to discuss going the next step with that. The Summer Concert Series, all I'm gonna add about that is, as of right now, the eight concert, or the eight, I don't wanna say this, the eight bands are already scheduled for eight weeks. I can't tell you how many people I got emails from that want to join up to that, and I give them all credit for finding me in the village, since I'm no longer, obviously, in town, but unfortunately, it's booked for this year. I believe there's three or four brand-new bands on that list. They tried to get local people in there, which is on that list, and I will share it once it's printed out nice, and we will discuss if the Village of Otisville wants to get involved, like we did last year, and do our twenty percent of that concert series, so that'll be the next one. I am attending Monday and Tuesday, so I will not be around. I am attending with four Town of Mount Hope Council, and the supervisor, a training in New York City, Association of Towns Training, which is still for villages, too. There's gonna be plenty of other mayors down there, and also some, a lot of people from Orange County. It's a big thing every year, I'll go a couple times, and I will be attending that Monday and Tuesday on my own dime, if anyone asks that question, not on anyone else's. I will bring back as much information that I can. Obviously, on budgeting is really why I'm going, since we're gonna be in the gist of this coming up towards the end of February. So, that being said, believe it or not, that's all I have, and we'll skip right over to audience participation. Anyone from the audience, just come up, speak your name.
Phil Adams in Otisville, New York, I don't have to tell you my street anymore. I just wanna give you an update on the banner, Veteran Banner Program. We're up to forty-seven, or, you know, not on, gonna be on order. March first is the deadline, so that's coming up shortly, and then we'll start our fundraising Phase Two for the Rapids.
So, just to go on that, if anyone wants to donate any money, they would, I already asked this before, but I want you to put it out there, if anyone wants to donate any money towards this, or has a feeling about it, cause I do, and I think this is gonna be a great thing, how do they go about doing that?
Make a check.
Yep.
VFW Post fifty-four ninety-seven, and Post Office Box sixteen Otisville.
Okay, if we get any checks here, we can call you and you'll help.
Or drop them off at the Village Hall, or the Town Hall.
Okay. So, when you say you have forty-seven banners, that means you have forty-seven total so far?
Today.
Okay, so we have to figure out, cause the magic number was thirty-one, so we have to figure out very simply, guys, cause once we went past the thirty-one poles, we're gonna have to do something with our flags, not get rid of them, but figure out a way where we can put a flag, and possibly a banner, or vice versa, right? So, that's, we just gotta figure that out.
Put in some more telephone poles.
Utility poles.
I can't say that word anymore, again, okay, so...
Yeah, I'll work it in.
That's fine, listen, that's awesome, that's great, good to hear, and...
It's Oliverian fifty-seven.
Okay.
Big response, they have very, thanks to Heidi, it's like, two foot by four foot.
Your March first deadline, Phil, is that a permanent deadline, after that you're not taking it?
No, then it would go into like a second order, the company only does big batch orders, you know, it's not Amazon, it's huge, and the next one would be for veterans.
Okay, there you go.
So, if you don't get it by March first, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, not all as well.
Yeah, I hear you, I wanted to get one from my father, we're trying to locate a particular picture, so, I didn't know if I had. So, if I get it after March first, that would be like done by Veterans Day or something.
Yeah. Do you know where Phil lives?
Sure.
March second, you could probably go to his house and get it in there with his name.
With a little bottle of Scotch.
Hey, listen. Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Phil, before you sit down, a different subject, but at the last meeting, you were expressing some concern about the new apartment, the four apartments on Santarana Avenue. I was with the building inspector over something else, and I asked if I could review the plans, so that I could give you an answer, I don't know if you got to talk to her, but the final plans that were approved by the planning board were for two one-bedroom apartments, I think in the basement level, a three-bedroom apartment on the main floor, and a two-bedroom upstairs.
Yeah, I have the plans. The point was that the original planning board meeting, which was public, was for four two-bedroom apartments, and then the second planning board, which the public could not speak, we didn't know when these new plans were made. For, you know, there's a big difference between four two-bedroom apartments and a three-bedroom, and one bedrooms.
Well, from the planning board's perspective, it's the same number of bedrooms, so it would be the same number of parking spaces and stuff.
Realistically, though, there's a difference.
If you wanna talk to the building inspector, she'll be in here Saturday, she won't be actually in the building, so she meets me to get her new key, cause we rekeyed the building, but she'll be here about nine-thirty, and I think she'll be here for like two hours on Saturday.
I figured no problem.
Yeah, just a question.
I don't mind if you know, we all know.
Okay, good. Anyone else from the audience, audience participation, please step forward, speak your name, say your name, and...
I'm Justin Junior Allen, we live in the village, and we live pretty close to the firehouse.
First, I just wanna say thank you to the firemen and women, and all your work, and we appreciate what you do for the community, cause your service is invaluable. With that said...
It's about the siren. I don't, we live pretty close, so I don't know if you guys realize how close you guys live, you know, maybe it's not that bad, but for people that live close, it is ear-jarring. Just last week, it went off three times in one night, went off like one o'clock in the morning, like four in the morning, and like four forty-five. The trucks don't even always go out at that time, so why's it going off? We go to work, you know, everybody has to go to work, you know, the kids get woken up, you got kids crying, cause you know, two o'clock in the morning, two-year-old, we have a granddaughter, and she slept over, and she freaked out. Not just for that, just again, you know, it happens during the week, on the weekends it's not as bad, but if it just went off during the day, I don't really, don't think it really affected that many people, but the nighttime is, it's so bad, and in the summer, you have your windows open, you might as well take the siren and put it in our living room, it's that loud.
We live, we live right next door, we're at sixty-four, so we're, you know, we're right next door, and just, just not understanding the reason why, at least between, your noise ordinance law is eight PM to seven AM, so in between that time period, I'm just, we're just trying to understand why it does go off, especially when you have scanners and pagers, and, you know, it's not...
Not like anybody's using the siren to actually come to a fire call. They all have their pagers, and it goes off, not...
I'll agree with you, I dislike the fire whistle, too, cause that's, we all have to get up, go to the calls. Last week was mutual aid call, we called for one truck, then another truck, then we had a medical call. The fire whistle, like you said, we have texting, we have app, what's that, in a month, like twice a month, the system goes down with the county, believe it or not. I like technology, but I also hate it. If the pager goes down, there's no, you know, same thing, if the power goes out, there's a backup generator with the whistle. I personally, myself, I don't know, there's seventeen other members that live right near the village, I use that to wake myself up, cause I don't know, two o'clock in the morning, you're getting woken up by that, I'm also getting woke up by pager that goes extremely loud, it's, you know, you're in deep sleep, you're relaxing, and what the heck's going on, you know? With that said, sometimes you go back to sleep, believe it or not, or you'll hear the whistle, and then I'm like, okay, I gotta get up. We have three minutes to answer the radio, when the pager goes off, you have to answer county, if there's no available unit that answers that, you'll get a resound, and that's the whistle you hear, three minutes after that, and then we'll answer, you know, usually, if there's not a chief around, a driver, or somebody has to get up to the firehouse to use the radio to contact that way. Paging system, I know it, it all sounds great when we're talking about it, you got a text message, they give us all the information when we call nine-one-one, anything you say to the dispatcher now comes to us, so if you say, I got a fire in my house, we're coming Russian. Meanwhile, it could be, I had a small fire, now it's out, all that information is on the text message. But more often than you would expect, the paging system and the text messaging system goes down, and if there's an emergency, the whistle will go off, it's like a backup to alert everybody at nighttime, and then during the day, people used to complain about the Little League. It's a warning device to let everybody know that personal vehicles are gonna be going to the firehouse, and the fire trucks will be coming and responding, it's a heads-up warning for people. I hear you about the noise and all that stuff, cause we'll be at the firehouse, and the whistle goes off, we'll either have to go inside, or wait for that to go down, it's seven cycles of seven seconds, it goes up, comes down, goes up, comes down, so I'll have to wait, or you get in your car, answer the radio, but it is a great, great warning device, I understand your concern.
I mean, there's a lot of other fire departments that don't use the siren, and they stopped using sirens years ago, because you have this, this technology, I mean, for you guys to say, oh, it's our, it's our backup, it's not a backup, listen, if it goes down, if your paging system goes down, and you wanna do the alarm, that's, you know, great, cause you have the backup, but why does it have to be on every day twenty-four-seven?
Cause I'm on duty twenty-four-seven, every day.
And you have a beeper.
So, yeah, that's okay.
Like every other department, and every other department doesn't have a siren.
My job is fire chief in New York City.
Let me just say this to you, guys, I know you were agreeing to me, and I actually asked you to come to a meeting, cause I, listen, I live close, but I don't live anywhere near as close as you guys do, so let me say this to you. Thank you, I hear you, we're gonna discuss it to the board, and I will definitely talk to the fire department, and let's come up with some kind of solution, how about that? I understand what you're saying, and I get it, again, I don't live in your house, I understand what you're saying, and so I will say it again, but let us talk about it, and let us see if we can come up with a solution for at least night hours. Again, I wanna get feedback from the fire department, that's why I wanted you, listen, I understand what you, again, I'll say this, you guys live two houses away, I, you know, Heidi that lives in the back lives to the house next to you, and I'm sure there's other people that obviously either haven't come forward, and maybe by us putting this out and videotaping this, maybe they will come forward and let us come up with a solution. Fair enough?
Okay.
Okay, I thank both of you.
Just to touch on the truck thing, as a courtesy, usually, depending on the call, at nighttime, we're not gonna go red lights and siren racing through the village, if there's traffic, we'll turn the siren on, that's the way you hear that, but that's the reason behind, you'll hear, you won't hear the fire truck, or if it's a medical call, my truck's equipped, my wife usually rides, we meet, she's an EMT, same thing with Tony, different people come up, and the same thing, we just, we'll go, as a courtesy, we'll respond without going crazy with the noise, so.
I do have one other question, though, and this is really more out of curiosity than anything, how come the sirens increased, though? It used to only blare like five times, now you blare eight times. And I count, only cause it's two o'clock in the morning, I'm counting each cycle.
Yeah.
As my dog, as my dog howls.
It used to never be more than five, and now it's like seven and eight.
It's always been, I've been in the fire service here for over one thirty years, and I was chief, and it was always seven times, the only time it goes off once, is at lunchtime.
Could there have been a malfunction?
It could be a malfunction.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it would've been.
Thank you.
I know it's what's happened.
Anyone else, audience, thank you, Rob, friends, any audience participation, if you have anything, no, go on once, Tony, you have anything to say? All right, just just, okay. Old business, I'm not really gonna go over this, cause I know, Bob, you said this, but quarterly reviews, you guys know what you need to do. Lance, talk to me, you're on the list.
I did listen to you, I sent you that on...
That's fine, just, please, please get it to me, I'm not gonna wait all year, okay. The weight limits on Village Roads, we need to set a public hearing for this, you got a copy of it? Unfortunately, Rory's not here to explain this part, but I at least wanna set a public hearing for this, to see if anyone from the public has anything to say about it, so that being said, I just need a motion to set a public hearing for the next board meeting, which if I did it right, would be March seventh, yes, and we're not coming in early, it's gonna be seven o'clock on March seventh, the public hearing.
So, moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
All right.
You second me back, Brian?
Brian Lauter. Border renovations, we're gonna postpone that for the next meeting, let's go to something important here, since the fire department guys are here. Lo Sap, firefighter benefits program, we need, a resolution is needed for this.
So, I need to read this whole thing out loud to you?
Go ahead.
Okay, well, bear with me, can my voice... Okay. In the matter of amending the service award program for active volunteer firefighter members of the Village of Otisville, oh, and by the way, I hope you all saw it, there was, and Diane noticed, that the amount listed on the first one that you got the other day, these were wrong, so we, I sent, Kate sent a new one today, updated those amount, because I think it was kinda, they kinda did it maybe to base it almost like on the people who, it looks like they kinda based their original amounts, they put in there other people who qualified this year and last year, but it really, the wording says, kind of, we can believe that it should be the amount of the potential people who could get it, if everybody in the other company got it, so we changed it to be, to be that, so that's the only difference from the two that you got, but I'll, so I'll read it now. Whereas, in accordance with Article eleven A, the New York State General Municipal Law, eligible voters residing in the Village of Otisville approved a proposition to establish a defined contribution service award program effective January first, two thousand twenty-one, for active volunteer firefighter members of the Village of Otisville, and whereas such service award program is administered by the Village Board of Otisville, provides that an active volunteer firefighter currently earns a five hundred dollar service award contribution for each calendar year, during which the volunteer firefighter earns fifty or more points under the service award program point system. And whereas Article eleven A currently allows annual service award contributions to be as much as twelve hundred dollars, and whereas Article eleven A authorizes the Village Board of Otisville to seek voter approval of amendments to the service award program that will improve service award program benefits, and thereby are intended to help the Village of Otisville recruit and retain active volunteer firefighters. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Otisville, as authorized by Article eleven A of the New York State General Municipal Law, two sixteen directs that there shall be a public referendum of eligible voters of the Village of Otisville in an election to be held on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to determine whether the Village of Otisville Volunteer Firefighter Service Award Program shall be amended effective January first, two thousand twenty-five, to increase the annual service award contribution from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars for each calendar year beginning after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, during which an active volunteer firefighter earns a year of service credit under the point system. Based on the current active volunteer firefighter roster, the cost of funding the current program could be as much as seventeen thousand dollars or five hundred dollars per volunteer, if all current volunteers earn a year of service and credit under the point system. Should voters approve this amendment, the annual cost could be as much as thirty-four thousand dollars or one thousand dollars for each participating volunteer. The annual cost of administration, the program would not change because of the adoption of this amendment. The annual cost of administration, the program would not change because of the adoption of this amendment. The current program administration cost is about seven hundred dollars per year. All of the provisions of the Village of Otisville Volunteer Service Award Program, which require voter approval, shall not change. And the program shall continue to be administered by the Village Board of Otisville in accordance with Article eleven A of the New York State General Municipal Law. As such law is amended from time to time.
I have one question.
Yes.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to talk to you about this when I was in today. That last sentence. Um, shall continue to be administered by the Village of Otisville Board of. We're not the administrators.
Do they?
Because that was an option we had, that we could be the administrators or whoever they.
So we should just change that. You're right. When I first read this, I was thinking in the back that Kate is taking. Is keeping track of everything, but you're right, we did, so it should say pen flags.
Yeah.
Okay. We could change that for now.
Is that what the original one says?
I don't have you, I don't, I don't know. I have to look it up.
Yeah.
Whatever the amendments need to be, we're just gonna wait until.
Yeah, well, let's do it, because we don't have time to do anything else.
I just wanna say this, this is huge.
Yeah.
Um, obviously every firefighting, every fire department, everywhere has problems recruiting people. I think it's awesome that it was passed for five hundred dollars, um, in the beginning, but, um, this is a well-needed, I feel, and let's see what happens. Uh, a well-needed thing. And again, this is something that we're gonna pass, but correct me if I'm wrong, this is gonna be on the ballot March nineteenth.
Yes.
So all the voters in the Village of Otisville are gonna have a say on this. All we're gonna do is basically vote tonight to put it on the ballot. So, um, if anyone has a question about it, feel free to reach out to us. We can answer that. But I think this is gonna be a tremendous tool, uh, to get more people to join and to get more people to show up to calls, because you have to get a certain amount of calls. So that being said.
I was not arguing that fact. I wanna make sure that it's currently worked, so that it doesn't get thrown out.
It's correct, it has been corrected.
No, no, I, I. I didn't, you were arguing, I was just saying.
I'll check first thing in the morning before I send it over.
Yeah.
So.
So whatever the wording of the original is.
Yeah.
Uh, whether it's administ-, I mean, ultimately, we're the ones doing this, so, but.
And that's what I thought when I read this originally, because Kate's been tracking everything.
Yeah.
But now that you mention it, I didn't know that was a big thing, as like we.
Who's going to be the administrator?
They, if they're talking about administering it as far as keeping, tracking the money and holding the money, getting out the money.
Keeping the money. Right.
So what do we need to make this?
Pen flags.
So they didn't realize that, that that was a.
You know, I, I think probably what happens is I've seen this a lot with their work, they're cutting and pasting. I've seen them send us something that says, you know, Jeffersonville Fire Department or something like that. They're probably cutting and pasting and they probably cut and paste for one that was self-administering it and just put Village of Otisville in there.
All right, so you need a motion for this? Reach one of us? Do you wanna do a roll call on?
First, we just have to, we have to do first the motion to vote on the roll call, so somebody has to do a motion.
Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's still, he has to second that.
Thank you, Lance, thank you, Brian.
Okay, now you have to do a, a roll call.
Okay, roll call. Bob?
Aye.
How about yes or no? Aye is good enough. Brian?
Yes.
Thank you. Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Yes, for me too. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rob, for bringing that to me. Um, payment of playground equipment. Resolution needed. What do we have for that?
We don't have it, because Rory, I asked Rory the last week or like right after our last meeting to please help me out with that. And then he, his secretary did send me something today asking for the information again, but I never got anything. So I would say this, we wanna order it, let's just do a simple resolution to say that you're ordering. Because we did find out, which I sent out to all of you, that it actually can be prepaid because of the fact that it's custom. And she, the, the lady from NICOM, the attorney from NICOM, just suggested putting that as part of our resolution. Where normally we wouldn't even really pass a resolution, we would just make a motion. So I would just say, let's just make the resolution very simple, that we're giving John.
Orderization to order.
Order the first, are they? All right.
Yes.
Can I get a second on it? That's. Hey, it's fun, that's fun.
Based on that.
I think the resolution has to say that we're doing it based on the fact that it is a custom order.
Yes.
Second?
Second, Diane's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For ha-has, we're gonna do a roll call on this. Bob?
All right, but yes.
Thank you.
I think it's the same though.
It is, it is.
Yes.
Brian, thank you. Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Not that you need it, but yes, for me too. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
New business, summer concert series, uh, let's postpone that for new business next time, but I do wanna discuss next time if we want to be involved in that. Um, we'll go from there. Um, motions and resolutions, let's work our way down here. Um, we're resolution to approve the following modifications to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget. Do you feel like reading the rest of that, Christine?
Sure.
Thank you.
Decrease fire medical equipment repair thirty, thirty-four, one oh five point one point twenty-seven by twelve thousand one hundred fifty dollars. Increase fire truck repair thirty-four, one oh four point one point thirteen by six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Increase medical supplies. Uh, fire medical supplies thirty-four, one oh five point one point twenty-five by six thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to, uh.
Not, it's not for it.
Yep.
Yeah.
What's that?
I was just, they're necessary moves.
Yes, they are necessary.
Everything we do here is necessary, right?
I'm just doing it for a buck.
Everything.
And I know I.
That's the third line now.
Yeah.
So. Can, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, modifications, uh, to record insurance recovery.
Increase insurance recoveries, one nine one oh four point one point zero in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents. An increased fire department building repair. Three four one oh four point one point two one in the amount of seven hundred and ninety, seven thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Before I go any further, this was for an insurance payment.
Right.
Um, there is gonna be a couple modifications to it, because we're still collecting receipts on stuff that we got, but this is what. Uh, the insurance company paid us minus the twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. So that being said, can I get a motion to, uh, for that modification?
To make a motion for the modification, we record insurance recovery.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Modification to record grant funding for the, finally, for the Route two eleven, um, water main replacement.
Increase water capital grants four nine nine one point one two point zero in the amount of one hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. Increase transfer capital reserve, water system improvements by one hundred twenty-one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars. That's actually for the original payment.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along here. Can I get a motion to, um, pay our bills, general, water, fire and capital? Um, I'm just gonna read them. General, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars, twenty-five cents. Water, sixteen thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, fifty-two cents. Fire, seventeen thousand, five hundred eight, uh, dollars and eighty-two cents and capital, um, one hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred seven dollars and fifty-two cents.
And move the pair of bills.
And we've previously done the resolution to.
It's not actually coming from the capital reserve, it's just a capital expense, so we don't have to do that. It's just a capital expense.
So it's coming out of general fund?
Water fund.
Water, okay.
Yeah, it's actually gonna be mostly reimbursed by the grant.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, before we go to closing comments, I wanna bring up that something that Brian had spoke about, and if I missed anything, then please speak. Um, the Ketchum Fence, um, fencing for, uh, Field A. Um, which was, uh, if I read this right, he had given this to us back on eight one of twenty-three. Um, I believe when we approved the B field, um, I made a comment at the meeting that let's talk about this, um, during the, that next budget cycle. Um, my concern is, um, the price increase that this is gonna go up, because it seems like nothing goes down. So I just wanna discuss this between the five of us here and see what everyone's feeling is on it. So guess who gets to start with this one first, Bob?
Out of my comments?
Yes.
Uh, just a question, do we know what's gonna happen to the, uh, new cutoff road going down to Cali Hill after the bridge is complete? Will that stay after the road or?
I'll, I'll answer your question.
Is it gonna go fallow?
It is gonna be the nicest grass in Otisville that we have. And there is no way of keeping it for those that ask, because we would have to pay for a traffic study, let me just say cha-ching. It would be a four-way intersection. I tried asking for a one-way. I tried asking for, to leave it, to cut it, to leave it a sidewalk, to go to the train station. And, uh, every option that I tried for got shut down by the county. So therefore, um, as I said to them, that was top, uh, grade A topsoil that our grass was on, when it was originally before it was the road. And, um.
It was back to a grassy knoll.
They'll put a fence up at the top and bottom. But that being said, what's your feeling on this Ketchum Fence, uh, proposal that Brian had introduced to us back on eight one? Um, this was for the A field backstop for the price of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. And let me just add this, as Brian added, uh, I didn't do your ten percent increase, but, um, if we're talking from, uh, eight one. And today being obviously, however many months later, um, two fifteen. Yeah, we're talking however many months. So I, listen, I just wanna talk about it. You brought it up, I wanna talk about it. I don't wanna just push it under. I wanna see what you have to say. We obviously spent close to thirty-two, thirty-something thousand dollars on the backstop for the A field. Um, I'm sure it'll be the talk of the village when people go down there for Little League, um, from the beginning of the season. Um, but obviously, um, that being said, that was very old. That's an understatement, the backstop that we replaced.
This is older.
This is older.
I, I understand that, and I know you brought some issues with the fence being bent up. Uh, again, I just wanna talk about it. I don't wanna drag it on. I just wanna see what your feelings are, so. Would anyone like to see, I guess I'll ask it this way, would anyone like to see us go forward or would you like to see us wait to the next, um. Fiscal, or I guess, yeah, budget year?
I don't know, probably going forward, I mean. We know metal's going up at the price, and that is actually cheaper than any other backstop we did. Compared to the other two. You know, the C field, we did the whole thing, but this is still less money than the B field. That's just me.
So I take it you wanna make the investment?
Yeah, we, we, we're done with the whole park down there. We still working on the park up here. That's me.
Diane, what's your feeling?
Next fiscal year, I mean, we, we, like you said, we did the C field. Then we, we hadn't even budgeted to do the B field this year, but we went ahead and did it. And at the time, we said, well, we'll, we'll go ahead, we'll use the money that we have, even though it was on some budget. And then we'll look at A next fiscal year. We're only a few months away. I know it's ten percent increase, but. It's not growing on trees, the money, so I think we gotta wait and do it next fiscal year.
Bob?
I'm a little reluctant to, uh, spend it now because of the big expenditure we just did there. To, uh, short of any imminent safety hazard or something like that, I would tend to, uh, concur with Diane.
Yeah, the biggest issue is exactly what you said, was a lot of the safety down there. Which I understand there is a lot of stuff out all over right now. But ten percent increase, no matter where you go, it's a lot. Everything just goes up. So I mean.
Well, I guess we're.
I'd like to.
Two people don't, two people yes. So I will say this to you guys. If you are that adamant about it, then I would say put this up for a motion and let's see where it rolls. Um, if you want to do it this year, um, under this particular timeframe, then obviously it would have to be taken out of. What did we take it out of last time?
Fund balance.
Fund balance.
That would be a board resolution.
So for those of us that don't know what fund balance is, that is taxpayer money that was collected and is sitting in our bank account right now, that we haven't used for. Other stuff. So yes, we did have a nice big expense tonight, which I think we're gonna, obviously see where we go with it, um, as far as for the engineer. But, uh, if you're adamant about this, my, my suggestion is to bring it up for a vote. Let's just do it that way and then we'll put it under, we'll do some closing comments, and then we'll go into executive session and have another ten minute conversation. So, would you like to bring it up for a motion?
I'd like, yeah, bring it up for a motion.
Go ahead, Brian.
Move forward with, get it done and over with?
You have to, you have to, you have to have a motion, yeah, to bring it, you have to have a motion to vote on a resolution.
Help on a motion.
Yeah, to do a motion first, and then you have to do a resolution, because you're taking money out of fund balance. So it's a, a modification, taking money out of fund balance.
So we're gonna do a motion first. If you get your motion, then I guess it's gonna go to a roll call, so that's fine.
Can I ask one question first?
Yes, sir.
How much is available in fund balance?
Um, I would have to add that up right now, but I would say probably, because I'd have to see what we had and then add up a couple things. We took money out of there for the truck. The last, I think it was just the truck and the other fence, right? So.
And what about the guard rail with that?
Oh, the guard rail too.
Yes.
So it was what, like nineteen for the guard rail?
Nineteen for the guard rail, yep.
The first fence was what, thirty?
Thirty-two, I believe, yep.
Two, three, two.
So nineteen and thirty-two, so like, like forty-one. And then, and then how much is that truck that we're taking out of fund balance?
Which one, which truck, we're all, total?
Now, you, you guys done monitoring this money?
Yeah, we're monitoring reserve.
Some was in reserve.
Right.
And some, we were taking partially out of reserves and partially out of fund balance.
At the top of my head, I can't remember.
I have to link it up.
I think it's, I think it was around twenty-five, was it, yeah?
Yeah.
I think it was around, okay.
Somewhere near.
Does that answer your question, Bob?
And I think we started the year with about five thousand dollar fund, fund balance.
What did we have in there? Eight hundred, something?
Was it eight hundred dollars or was it a hundred? Was it? It wa, I don't think it was eight. That might have been including the reserves, but I think it was probably maybe, was it like six?
Six hundred thousand.
I don't remember.
Six hundred thousand.
Even if we still have a healthy fund balance at this point in time. We, as you said, tonight, we, we voted to move forward with something that we know is gonna be like thirty-five thousand dollars out late. We heard that we have three roofs who we may have to work on, you know, and that's the kind of thing. Can that wait till next fiscal year? We sure hope so, but if it, you know, if one of them defaults completely, then, then we have to have something to fall back on. To move forward. That's, that's my thought.
Okay. And I didn't forget about your Kubota. We'll talk about that in a second. I almost forgot. You would have left it, okay. So. You made a motion. To take money from, I'm not putting words in your mouth, because I want you to say the motion.
I don't know how, make it a motion.
A motion to vote on a re, just like a, a motion to, um, vote on a resolution to take money out of fund.
Resolution, taking a fund balance.
Yeah.
Of twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five, eight hundred.
Twenty-five thousand, eight hundred.
To finally complete every fence down at the field.
That would be after this, if we did this, there's no other fence improvements that we can do.
No, sir.
Not as far as.
Not unless some bank field. Not unless someone runs into it. Okay, so I got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
I'm gonna vote aye, um, for the reasoning that I, I think the fund balance is healthy enough to do it this year. It has to be done next year is probably, of course, this will, but it has lay on the rush now.
That's one.
Twenty-five hundred dollars more, yes.
That's one. Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna do a roll call.
Yes, a roll call, so the, the, the resolution.
So, Bob?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Diane?
No.
If you need me, yes. That being said, I look forward to Little League being done. I think Little League is one of the last things in the Village of Otisville, and I was gonna say this. Um, I've watched Boy Scouts, no longer exist with Reverend Farley's, um, for Otisville. We no longer have any Boy Scouts involved at all, so that doesn't exist here. And I think the only thing that's really thriving is Little League, and I love it. And, uh, I look forward to them playing on the field and operating that once in a while, so, thank you. So now let's go to the Kubota. So, Frank, I hope you did some math, because I don't have the math here. So you guys sold all these vehicles and you collected approximately how much except for the dump truck?
Um, I thought you said last time twenty, twenty-one thousand, one thousand nine hundred.
Nine, yeah.
Almost one two.
Almost twenty-three, yeah, twenty-two.
Okay, now. I was here yesterday when Kate called Auctions International to find out, we have one for the garbage truck that hasn't picked it up. But has he paid? Did she find that out? He was, no, not the garbage truck, the, the dump truck. He was, no, not garbage truck, the dump truck.
She, we don't have confirmation that he has paid, but she said that he, that she must check through Auctions International and he was going to pay today.
Okay, so that being said, how much is that dump truck for? That's my big question. Do you remember, when it sold for, twenty-two something? All right, don't, you know what, don't worry about it. Here, I'm just gonna ask this question because I already know the answer, but I just wanna put this out there. If the first person that bought that truck refuses to pay or doesn't pay in a timely fashion, it goes to the number two guy. The difference is?
Fifty bucks.
Fifty bucks. Now, if the number two guy doesn't accept it, it goes to the third person, how much is the difference?
I don't know, I'll look it up.
Okay, okay. I think it was, I, okay. So, fifty dollars difference between the first and the second. So, all your vehicles, if you sold, you would've gotten twenty-one thousand nine hundred and something dollars, correct? Okay. So, what did you come up with? Listen, thank God you cleaned all that stuff out, thank God it sold, and thank you to the people that bought it, including the guy that drove our garbage truck back to Maine. I hope somebody on the highway said, Village of Otisville, where is that, as he's driving to Maine. It's beautiful. Beautiful, and I, I love that the, our garbage truck is somewhere else. How much, I think you said that there is a difference of, like, I wrote this down. For the Kubota was twenty-four, four, eighteen, eighty-two.
Right.
Now, I wrote it down, right? Twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars eighty-two. Now, explain to me the difference, just so we know this, so.
The Kubota comes, it's with, it's got heat, AC, and it's got a two-year extended warranty. The John Deere is just cabbed with the heat, and there's no warranty.
No warranty on it?
None at all, none on the.
How much is that one?
The warranty is worth eleven hundred dollars.
Right. Twenty-three thousand three hundred thirty-two eighty-eight for the John Deere. There. And I couldn't find anything on here with a warranty.
No.
And this one comes with a two-year extended warranty.
With an option to buy more if we need it?
Probably.
I don't need to know that now, but that might be something to look into down the road. Okay, so, anyone have any questions about these? Like, listen, I, I, I.
You know where it's getting funded from?
Here's my only comment that I have. I just wanna make sure that if and when this passes, and again, not my decision, it's the board's decision. Is there gonna be any kind of training on this for the guys? Because the worst thing I wanna see is, I don't really wanna see, how fast does this thing go? Twenty-something, thirty miles an hour? The last thing I wanna see is me coming down to Village Hall and having a guy go by, and he had thirty. Well, he can do thirty, I realize, on Highland Avenue, but no faster. Right, no faster.
We do have to register these and everything, right?
Yes.
It, it, will you, will you have some sort of training?
Yes.
That's all I wanna know. That's my concern. If anyone else has any concern, that's my concern. Not that I don't trust our guys, I do, but I realize sometimes when, when boys get new toys, they wanna see what they can do, and I just wanna make sure that we're not having a different conversation at some point.
I got the numbers you wanted. My truck was, came in at twenty-eight hundred fifty dollars.
Yep.
And the second one would be twenty-eight hundred. The third lowest would be twenty-six fifty.
Okay. So, no matter what, we're pretty guaranteed through Auctions International to get rid of that truck if the first guy doesn't. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions about this? What do you have in your budget for the difference, I guess is my question? Do you know if you have money in your budget for the difference of the price of, of this?
Yeah, I could come up with, move a couple things around.
Okay, okay. That's, that's real, this is in this budget, I realize, so, okay.
Yeah.
What exactly would this be used for?
My question.
Okay, listen.
For watering trees.
For watering trees, for watering, for the garden club. We're gonna be doing that.
Yep. They're gonna be, I mean, look at the camera and say that. We, we talked about that.
Um, weed whacking.
Weed whacking.
Getting fire hydrants.
Has a dump fire, yeah.
Down the dump alley, it's winter time.
I draw a company.
Shoveling out hydrants, I send two guys around because it has heat. And so, we send it around, they shove off fire hydrants.
Putting up banners, right Phil?
Don't have that kind of.
There's plenty of uses.
Putting the mulch around the trees. Uh, so, running a boulder, tobacco out on the field, we run this down, they dump the mulch around the trees.
Be more useful than around pickup trucks all the time.
Listen, you sold me at the watering for the, for the garden club, so, all right, thank you. Bob, do you have any questions on this?
No.
All right, are you for this, against this?
No, I'm for this.
Okay, Brian?
For the one with the extended warranty.
Okay, I was just gonna say I'm for the Kubota.
The warranty, and so we have a Kubota. I can't believe the John Deere doesn't have nothing on it.
I don't think it's been on here.
Yeah.
And that comes with no attachments, right? We got that on.
You can never, you can put a snowblower, right?
Right, for the sidewalks.
Hey, listen, one step at a time, they just.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. I don't want any favoritism going on with the DPW because it seems, okay. Um, let's just vote on this. So, can I get a motion for, and let me say it this way. Can I get a motion, once the dump truck is paid for and you get your twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars total, for these guys to call Kubota and order this Kubota machine with the warranty for, extended warranty for two years for twenty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents? In some way, somehow, Frank is gonna figure out where he's gonna pull that out of his budget, which I loved that part, by the way. That's the fine line on the bottom of the, wait, before you say it. So, can I get a motion?
Make the motion as stated by the mayor.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, guys. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, anybody board comments? We're gonna start with you, Bob, because I started with Diane before.
I prematurely made my comment and got mine.
All right, that's all right, listen, you gotta a quick response, okay, Brian? Lance?
No.
All right, Diane?
Just following up on Bob's premature comment, and you and I had really briefly talked about perhaps putting something behind the fence once that's beautiful grassy area is there. Where we could put up announcements, which would give that property village use. So, that's just to plant some seeds.
We'll try to get them, I believe they said they're gonna put in guard rail. Last conversation I had with them, but let's see if maybe we can get, if, if they're gonna do guard rail at the top and the bottom, to my understanding, maybe we can put a nice section of nice chain link fence that's not bent over looking horrible. I can't imagine that's gonna cost much to do. And maybe we can do that, or is, did you mean something different than that?
I mean, we talked about something similar to the sign at the bottom of the, by the firehouse, at the bottom of the hill.
At the top of it?
No.
You wanted, you wanted it at the bottom of Kelly Hill?
No, no, no.
No, 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 top. I know what you're looking for.
Yeah, the right thing.
The sign on the corner, you, that takes the plywood.
Posts.
Yes. If we put something like that, that's a permanent structure.
Yes, we're probably gonna have to get someone to dig, so we, there's a water main going down there, right? Is that something you guys can do? If not, we can look to have Ketchum maybe come out and put posts.
We can do it.
I like your, I like that, John. And you see that? John stepped right up and says, we can do that. I like that, I like that.
The only question on that, the whole, we're all talking about all that beautiful grass, we own it. We need a way to get in there to mow it.
I know.
Yes. That's just.
Listen, we're, you guys are gonna talk to them, but let's just talk to them about maybe making some way.
A new Kubota.
That's fine. If we, if we do put posts up in there, I just wanna make sure we put some sort of signage, property of Village of Otisville, so no one puts any other signs there. I mean, listen, I don't care about, I'm saying four by eight signs, right? I wanna see someone, okay. That being said, did we all do, all I wanted to say is, this event that's happening on Baker Street, the Chinese New Year, at least come out and support it. We're gonna have a lot of folks here.
Lot of food.
Absolutely, I know you're willing. I wanna thank Kara from the Epop Times. I actually got to go door-to-door with her over the weekend. She printed a nice article about it yesterday, and we're getting some hits. So, if you haven't signed up for constant contact, please do so by going to our Facebook page. And again, I just wanted to thank her publicly for that. That being said, I'd like to motion so we can go into executive session.
One quick comment on this. For the people who were not at the town meeting, perhaps, because that's where I created it. There is no, the only parking down at the event on Baker Street is handicap parking. So, other people will have to park up at the school, and then there will be a shuttle bus going over.
What they're gonna do and how they've changed that since the board meeting is, you're now gonna drive over to Baker Street, drop your family members off. They're gonna, there's gonna be a police officer there, correct her on Baker Street, and sanatorium is the plan.
Oh, legit.
Um, they're gonna turn that one person around, send them over to the school to park, and then that one person's gonna be shuttled back. And the reason they did that is because they have, they paid a crazy amount of money for busing, but instead of transporting your whole family over there, that's kind of how they wanna do it. I'm curious to see how it's gonna work to be continued for next meeting, but that's the only change, instead of taking the whole family. Again, listen.
So, you only have to pay for the shovel for one person instead of the whole family?
Yes, they're looking for, yes. We're gonna see how it works. Clearly, there's not a lot of parking down there, and there was, being involved with it last year, there was a decent amount of complaints, but being on the village side this year, there are all village residents down there, and the last thing I want is complaints. So, I will be there all day Saturday, probably all day on Sunday. Any comments from me are gonna be at twelve o'clock on Saturday, so come down, enjoy the food. Can I get that motion to?
I'm gonna go in.
Motion moved into executive session?
Second.
Second, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna come back. Thank you for everyone, the team, but we're gonna be a little while.
Christine, why turn the heat off? I didn't bring my jacket.
Also fight them.
She turned the heat off.
I don't even. I, I have a comment. I'm gonna text it to you.
Christine did it, play the property, right? How many times, Christine, how many times that thing haven't gone? And I'd burn you. I'd say, I'd, but, millions.
So, they moved in after the fire, some companies been there, so they knew what they're moving into. I wanted to say that, but I was trying to be.
But it's time, I know, for fat skating, next is only, my big reveal up there, it's gonna be yours.
Not bad.
I feel sorry for you.
And it sucks, but you know what, I gotta get out of this.
Honestly. Not much you can do about it. It's just good for everybody to know, oh, that's going off. Maybe there's a truck in the place. I mean, get my kid out of the street, right? Because I don't have your.
I just wanna let everyone know that the camera's still on as we're going into executive session. Just saying.
You know, I mean, I got my kids all hung up.
Your roof, we're gonna get out too. Yeah, that's it, just like your cat, I love technology. Technology, always trying, always trying.
I just wonder, and will the other people back?
Good night. Oh, you're tough.
Good night, guys. And our neighbors. Good job. Because after that, there's, uh, lay on the tech, down before that part, sure. We're behind the drain.
I mean, when we first.
We had that filter must've loose up there. We got the bog part, too, they had to go back fixing it.
Maybe that's why I don't need some water.
I think, whatever, came down that hill.
They know about it, they looked at it.
It's a federal road out. Maybe out of the spot, coming down, so whatever, they probably have to go back up between all the leaves and all that rust. So, that probably.
Well, right at the, on, for two months. The last. Aimed right at our house. And then they have. Tremont and more. Drain. But it's not connected to anything. It just goes anywhere. Yeah. So, I mean, you're getting, you're getting that whole spread coming down from that part. And it's not going anywhere. I mean, when we moved in, we had a very. And in our basement, we got a substantial. Then we. Was that a drain in? That's why. Gets over there. And on super heavy. She's gonna leave it down on the counter and.
I have my phone, but.
Now, another phone water.
And then our dining room and kitchen is a crawl space. But now, water seeps through that, it's coming out. And I do. But I don't, I don't mind. So, I might. My phone.
No.
I sleep.
I wish I.
Yeah, right.
My kids whisper during the night, I'm up. Back over?
I know we've had some really freak storms.
I mean, ever since they're working. Seems to be a little bit.
Five, they have a. They have a. That probably is.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I got the, the French radio. I go out there and I raid that, you know, get some stuff out of this, so it flows. I'm about ready to find some stuff to put in to the fence. Just wait for the house to sort of wait. Really? Was that motorcycle? Snake guy.
Car, come a car.
They're gonna water them here. He goes, this needs to be re-engineered because if, from the firehouse to my house, it flows downhill. Then coming the other way, it flows downhill. My house leaves and the next house over are kinda like the flat spot. So, they keep digging it down, 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 so the water flows toward the firehouse. Pretty soon, you know, so it's like down, down, it's all in that ditch and it disappears. Twelve feet deep.
Relocated to a.
Chicken-friendly area.
Chelsea, you're saying?
Yeah, I see you.
Have a good night, guys.
We gotta play, 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 man, it's up.
Ninety-nine point nine percent.
Where'd you go after you go up?
Ask your house, pardon?
We really go, you know. Mark, we're just giving them adding. You wanna pack their outside?
I went to Nick's.
Oh, that's Nick's, it's like.
Yeah. Yeah, I just. Slow work. That's why, like, after, when I go out and I check that pipe, see how it's flowing out there, I keep throwing stones and stuff in. Two across, it's the rocks and stuff. Because you know, some people. My, my son pump has lungs, and a couple of times, we've had storms and the power's been out. I got a generator with another pump. So, you just try to keep up with it, just go down. Moving top, fricking sunk pumps that sit down. So, the water gets up into that electric. There goes that pump, but I got a source. I mean, it's, it's like eleven hundred gallons of water, something like that, so. It keeps it down. Who she left?
You're like a walking, going down the street.
I'm not sure if she parked her keys, who'd make you lucky here?
She threw the roof.
They thought, they thought she was trying to.
Oh, nice. I don't think it's on. Oh, that's as he said it was.
Cause they're coming back to.
Now I can see the podium and the flags.
Look, come over here.
Nope.
Lots of openings. I'll tell you, we see a little story, all parts of the concern. I'll give you a pager, I'll give you a texting, to warn you that this iron.
He always, every fifty-nine years old. Yes, L F R bourbon just shut up, but they take the risk of copying, I don't hear it, cause I don't. Owl school here is theirs. Slate Hill school here is theirs. Off the top, they don't, they don't, they have. But, yeah, I can hear them clearly, I can hear Slate Hill, a good owl, a green bull.
My job is life and property, I wanna make sure you're awake, come up if something. Morning, boys.
What's the capacity of the hall?
What? I have no idea which one's tall, I don't know. Well, it's great. They're all tall?
Yeah, you open it.
You almost had four hundred in there.
That's how we, when we did.
Two twenty.
But see how. What was the way we got away with it, like you said, we put the bar and truck out, and then it gave us that whole space. Gave us that whole space. No, but this, that's. Yeah, I'm alright. First year, we had to put the bar out, that's the problem.
Little bar stayed, but we had all the tables and.
And we had stuff in the lounge, too, that first year. Yeah, we had. Honored when we would get, I had bring in tables and all.
The other day, for Louis, Louis was at four ten for, and Francis was up there.
Did Angel come on?
Angel came up, he was up there.
Ah, in twelve seconds.
Well, he had the longer lady cleaning. Bob Board just straight up the dirt.
Dude, I mean, they, they need to put a new speaker in there or something, or go back to the chimes, cause it, it's just like broken. I love it, I'm glad, but get a new speaker for it, so it sounds, sometimes, I think it's the eight o'clock one? You go off early, and it's like, it's too loud for the.
How's Francis doing, right? How's Francis doing, right?
The what?
Francis.
Francis, I'll treat the, go to another doctor's one tomorrow, I think she said, she's all kinds of stuff. He's doing good, her neck's healing up good, she's gonna lift her head up and all that stuff, put her scarf on, she's not as American, it was in her legs and. You know, she's all with us. We all walked out, and then. She's over by the truck. He'll have you have. Louis were talking, why? That's your dad, literally, miss that. Alright. Keep the queue out there. Are you going home?
I'm gonna go.
Stand by. Radio stand by.
I gotta, I gotta sign a few pieces of paper, remember?
Alright.
I'll be spending my weekend.
I'll see you. I'll be at work. How many people you had there last year, man?
I don't know.
It was quite a bit when we went.
We were just like all the people that were over the thousand.
What? They were lined all the way up to the first February.
Thousand people, with that thousand people, you could fit in that building?
Well, it's outside, it's in. Inside, outside, and both of them.
Oh.
Cold cooking.
Oh, wow. Any fireworks?
No.
No, the other day, you heard that, I'm good, man?
No.
Yeah, you heard that?
Yeah, I heard.
I, somebody said that that was a weird thing, is this like a celebration for that?
Yeah.
I don't know. It was twelve o'clock, she had to be there, or watching, like, boom, boom, boom. It's like, get on the radio.
You think it's like magically just gonna flow, right?
That noise, that was weird, so used to, doesn't bother you? That was like, it was just soft, right? One of the county ones, that shot, that was the way I liked it, we had the other one.
They had the dome yet, right?
Yeah, yeah, they looked at from that. Skirlish. Drop off, and leave. You can have, yeah, it's a juke, it'll be there.
Alright, so. We have personnel in here.
But see how you put bags inside the cans, too, or bags up to something else in the can?
I'm being off.
Cause you don't have those words. People put empty stuff outside, without bags on top, there you go, can, and you're bagging. Well, it's gonna be a lot of stuff, it'll be a lot of stuff.
If he can extend his leg, he's waiting. This is last day, we're a whole week long, we're not doing anything.
We got nine days coming up.
That's good, and he's rested, and he's got a excuse.
He's go check and get over, work from today.
It's not like that anymore. In the classroom, I'm like, we don't take anything home.
Oh, man.
Yeah, their phone and their laptop.
And what is it they're gonna do while they're?
That's why.
No, computers, they're PC, PC guys, come on.
They need a handicap, probably is not.
Oh, yeah, have any cans sitting full, don't they?
He can do that, he just can't hop up and down.
I'm sure you got some climbing ropes somewhere up here. Yep, those rope down, tied to the basket.
We got a little.
Pass it up. Daytona.
Does it happen that?
Well, you can sit down and wash the water.
I have a bed now, I can stay home.
Sit in the chair and wash the water.
I'll be at work. That's the dead guy's still hanging on, did you see that, what's happening with the boiler, the guy that fell in the boiler?
No.
From the eighth floor, he's on, working on the condomiser, the last part, where he goes up to the stack, steel heater, where there's smaller pipes, he's in there welding, drop the wrench, it's five o'clock. Goes down to the lower level, where there was also scaffolding. Wrenches below the thing, reaches through. Drop the wrench first, and then he fell, the guy that was doing hole watcher, bang, the wrench hit the thing, there's support, so he went down the whole gas research fan. Only thing I think that saved him is it's on an angle.
Yeah.
You know, so he like, maybe slid, but there's all the pipes and stuff, you got a compact fractured arm, his legs, his head. His partner, now he used to hole watch guys, listen, he's like, yell at them, no answer, try calling them. So he walked fast to the control room, you know, you're gonna get elevated, going across the thing, or whatever. I think my partner fell, I don't know, he's not answering me, he's in the thing, and so that, so that the boss is like, hey, call nine one one right away, do I go up to see, so they all run upstairs, trying to yell and this and that. He signs off, goes in, and he's looking, trying to find them, they call the phone, they can hear a ring, but he can't see. Call nine one one, the tech rescue, provided space rescue, there's like thirty-eight fire trucks, forty something with cop cars and ambulances and all that, and it took him an hour and a half. His phone, from when they were down in the bottom boiler, looking at the huge boiler, and then the gas research, they're like, I think it's over here, he was listening, listening, listening. So the fire department, right, safety, be safe, doing it, they're cutting their little access thing, it's like four layers insulation, the boilermaker guy's like, hey, this is what we do, you guys get out of the way, we'll do it for you, and uh. They cut the oil, the insulation ripped that off to the steel or whatever, the other thing, and then they saw him laying there on the, the other side of it, so they opened it up. Took him an hour and a half, and when he fell, to get him out of there, and then they blew him to the hack and sack, and he was grave danger for like five days, like they didn't think he was gonna make it, just had, you know, hemorrhage and all that stuff, and then big laceration on the head.
He missed his hole out, like, yeah, yeah.
It was a good day not to be at work, and then it was like, I think he said a hundred and twelve feet between them. Or state, or leader, the.
Everybody.
Then they're like, wait, what, he cut the boiler, oh, and then that's another division, cause now you gotta do this, do that. But he's alive.
Well, he's alive, look.
It just sucks, cause he, thirty-one year old dude, I don't know if it was him or the other guy, on Christmas Day, he come in, do work, whatever, he's like, I can't wait to get home, my kids, same three guys, usually the common contractors, but. It's all. Couldn't imagine that, there was a hundred and one feet, I think, from the level of that, where he fell, and it's, it's black, there's, there was light, light bulbs up top, they got the string lights, but they wear the welding mask and stuff, so you don't have a hard hat with a light on it, so you can just fall down and.
Bang, move.
Hit him. Yeah. Two here, child boy two, aren't they?
Then that's that, that's everything.
Personnel.
Could be anybody from the fire inspector.
Oh, well, I suck there.
Oh, yeah, anybody knows, I'm going. Ten Highland Avenue? Trap, trap, we gotta go down to the basement today, change the quarter meters. Hope anybody.
Yeah.
They all rodding, stairs, they got the furnace pipe running out the floor, up through the floor, right through that door, you walk in to go into the, I, you told them, send the fire inspector up there. The vents, you, furnace gets it on fire.
Yeah.
You're not getting in the basement to do anything, cause it.
You can't, you can't, that, where's the access, in the back?
In the back, I'm a big guy, no, I don't think freak, when I step on them, it's really freak, and I'm like. That I know.
That's what I'm Spanish, I use it, I use it with the.
Yeah. And it's from the window. Still unoccupied, right, they're trying to rent that?
I think the back one's empty, too.
Are they be able to rent it, out of the fire?
They have to, no, I, me personally, all depends with the fire inspector, he'll live in it. But there's a sheriff thing on the back of the door, I don't know if there's a victim version that's in there, that's Doug's brother, was in there.
Doug's?
Helped. Yeah, brother.
Oh, so he has older brother. I haven't seen him in a long time, he's still there?
Last I knew he was, but I said, I haven't seen either. You still can, you still can't see?
I don't look it up. Half the time, it's not lifting.
No, no. It needs to come down.
I saw it.
You wanna tear it down, you could put it.
Turn it on?
You could put it on, but you better, two family house there. No problem.
Still building? We should build the house. And the Spanish house. We're just trying to go up to hit the bell and do that.
Hopefully have the bridge open by end of April.
Hopefully, it's not a bridge.
No, it's whatever you like.
What's the technical word?
The bridge.
Used to be a pied duvet, that's what the county usually calls it, it was more than one span.
Yes, that's, oh, that's.
Well, we could have to rent that lift for.
What are you doing, good?
No, I'm shy.
No, I agree. My personal, you know?
When I come back, I would say, like, some.
My personal, anything would you do? Do uh. Doing a roof down there, put a metal roof on that, put a metal roof on there. You can put a tarp on that.
But your tarp's gonna last, though.
The tarp, it'd be, it'll be off the roof before you're off there. How do you go to Clarky? Hmm, any recent?
They, they do the doors, though, that's one, one volume. Not a spotter, actually. I don't know who won the first one. Tyler, ready for one? Mostly high, those are better for fire, you don't forget about it, do you?
No.
We just built that thing. It's like more, more. Is there, do you have like the, the structure book for that? Cause I work for Hudson, we just have to test that every, every month, you have an alarm, pressurizing or snapback, and do that?
No, we have tested.
That would help us, you know what I mean, if we did it.
Then sadly, we're supposed to.
Yeah, a little more stuff, what is it, the, the, like, acid?
Yeah, the spring, yeah, the spring.
I rebuild kit, must be four hundred or something.
Get rich, come down.
It looks like Turkey, and.
Cause he certainly, I haven't, you have to get him tested.
Yeah, well, I got him tested, what, your last time, when it was.
About last year, or the year before.
Twenty-three.
Huh?
Twenty-three.
Was it twenty-three?
Yeah. Yeah, cause I just gave Christine the results for that, for the boiler.
Well, June, well, we could have just, you know, tap, try tapping on it, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, try it.
Try that, both sides out, tap it on, tap it on.
Yeah, enough of that, so that's uh. I was going to classes on, like, September.
Can't just be ready to check out? It's gotta be here. Of course, right? And we, you never used to have to test the ones here, but now the health department wants to. How many do we have in the building? We have yours, we have a park, water plant, and booster fire station.
And uh, the new part of the building, happened.
Is it based on like the size of main company?
Well, actually, all new, actually, all new, all new three-quarter service, coming out, have to have. But that's a.
Not that spot, yeah.
Cause all those need checked out, but all new, it was. Just rubbing off.
Money, money, money.
You didn't, what, you can be spreading the word here?
Yeah, I think I seen one.
You've been working on the lead copper, then, next year, we have to have it, well, actually, this year, but October, that's a big. Not all out, have a program set up. You gotta take, you gotta have to take five percent.
Every year. Where do you guys have copper works at, well?
No, no, that means they give, like, lead copper's not even services, like the, the albanize services, all the albanize have to come out of system. That's our biggest problem.
You got?
Oh, yeah.
Year and a half?
Oh, yeah, year and a half, yeah, a year and five months. Half the day, you said. I'll probably stay, but just.
There, it's Saturday.
All the tents are sitting there.
Uh, Saturday for sure. Saturday for sure.
I don't know, it's late hours, it's good, but you know, you've been there. Well, this calls up the other day.
I'd like to try to do a district.
They get in, they get in home.
This makes sense, you know.
Problem is, it's. All they need you to do is let it go up the building, that time it would have been simple, done a little bit, but it is what it is.
It's the fourth time, you guys retired, we retired.
They're gonna find out, not just, the whole state's gonna find out, they need to change something.
A lot, yeah.
There's only people. The problem is, I don't time to change, you can't do certain things. But the fun has come out of it.
Okay, yeah, that's where you get the, you know, everybody's in a rush to get home now, the week.
You know, we'll give them, we had it wet down, so.
Well, in the summertime, I say kids, because they're young to me, but nineteen, and one other was fun, like, having a cigar, one of senior. I'm like, you're never here, you just happen to be here, when he had that thing that, like, really, turn the fan on.
Right, who cares?
Few years ago, we had ashtrays all over the firehouse, in the meeting, they had three feet of smoke.
She's got a theme now.
You're not the guy that's coming in four hours, at two AM to, to call, this kid that you're upset, to try and be cool and be a fire, you know?
You just, you just, it's all over places, just not, it's everywhere, it's all.
I'm serious this year.
Yeah, that's the thing, you get somebody that wants to come, they start doing stuff, things that are changing, they start this, and then they order. I think it's two doors.
The crazy, as far as they used to be, let down there, as far as they used to be. Man, you can try and do a water fight, like we used to do at.
Yeah, my, my era, that.
But it just happened to work, are you here to come? Matt, well, Robbie, you know, you weren't here until you went on Robbie. The old deck, and you just wake everybody out, just like a river.
Oh, jeez. Yeah, the hose, and the, the jump seat.
That's what Bob had. But just, just everything, or just everything, it's just, I just, I just, it's everywhere you know. You gotta, you gotta.
People complain, my thing is, what do you do for a living? What, what are you doing? Do better than me, if you wanna do the job, come sign up, come do it.
We want to be the responsors, or.
Yeah.
When something happens to somebody. But it's just everything, you're the highway. Every highway department, having the same, fighting guys, work, work.
What's that dot? So you can throw people in there, and we have six people, that's what I heard, and it's five people.
We're back. Darn, I didn't let.
Oh, we stole some people left, is that okay? Can I get a?
How do you get my letter?
Yes. No. I'll send, I'll send. What, you did, did you send it? No, can I get a motion, I'll wait for Diane, hold on one second, well, can I get a motion to come out? All right, thank you, let me turn the scanner off.
That was a double motion, one motion for a day?
Yeah.